Five seconds, Jeff. And welcome to this meeting of the Westboro Board of Selectmen. Tonight is Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, and this meeting is being held remotely. We previously opened the meeting to enter into executive session. We have concluded that and will not be going back into executive session just for the public's benefit. As we become accustomed, I'll read the Governor's orders. You'd think I'd have it memorized by now, but I don't, so I'll read it. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Westboro Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public in or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Westboro's website at town.westboro.m-a.us. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so through Westboro TV, streaming it online, or watching it live on cable charter Channel 192, Verizon Channel 28. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via these technological means. In the event we aren't able to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of Westboro's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, as we normally do, I'll run through the agenda. First agenda item will be approval of meeting minutes for two different meetings. Then we have a request to place flags on the Rotary in honor of Veterans Day. At 5:40, we'll have a request to place sign on West Main Street in honor of Veterans Day. 5:45, presentation, discussion, and vote on Veterans District update and request for the renewal of Central Massachusetts Veterans District. 5:50, request to appoint members to the Committee Preservation Act exploratory committee. 5:55, presentation, interface referral services. 6:10, discussion vote for the acceptance deed and execution of closing documents for property located at 31 to 33 Eli Whitney Street. 6:20, discussion vote for the fall town meeting warrant. 6:30, discussion vote amend bike and pedestrian advisory committee. 6:40, discussion vote approve facilities director job description and update classification plan. 6:50, discussion vote approve human resources general disposition job description and update classification plan. 6:55, discussion vote disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest by a conservation commission member. 7 o'clock, discussion vote request to sign the local initiative program compliance certificate for sale of 203 Corning Fairbanks Way, Unit 165. 7:05, discussion vote by the Board of Selectmen Committee Liaison Program. 7:15, Town Manager Report, and 7:25 Issues and Correspondence of the Selectmen. All right, great. We're all here. Let's jump into, do I have a motion for the approval of meeting minutes for September 22nd, 2020?
I'll move the acceptance of those minutes, September 22nd minutes.
Thank you.
Edinburgh, second.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Okay, hearing none as I'm writing and seeing none. Roll call vote. I'll go in the order that I see everyone. Selectman Emery?
Yes.
Selectman Edberg?
Edinburgh, yes.
Selectman Hashmi?
Yes.
Selectman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
And Selectman Marshall, yes, 5005 being present. And we'll move the next meeting minutes to approve September 29, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll move their acceptance to September 29th. Massive minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Edinburgh, second.
Okay.
Emery, second.
Lee, thank you. Discussion, comments, seeing, hearing none. Again, Selectman Emery?
Yes.
Selectman Edberg?
Edinburgh, yes.
Selectman Hashmi?
Yes.
Selectman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
And Selectman Marshall, yes, 5005 being present. Thank you very much. All righty. We are on, is Mr. Gallina on John Gallina yet? No. Okay. All right. You know what? Let's skip to the 5:40 item then, Kristy, since you were going to present that, if you would please, to place the sign on West Main Street.
Yeah, so this is the sign that, and I actually have it, I can share my screen. The sign is typically in the parade for Memorial Day and Veterans Day, but where we're not going to be able to celebrate in person this year. For Memorial Day, it was asked that this be placed on the cemetery fence on West Main Street, and the request is again happening for Veterans Day. So it's just a request to place the sign on the cemetery fence on West Main.
Okay, and this doesn't require a vote, correct, Kristy?
It does.
There's a vote.
Oh, it does. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So I would move to approve the request to place the proposed banner sign on the cemetery fence across from Town Hall.
Emery, second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions for the board?
Totally appropriate.
Nope, absolutely good.
All right, seeing none. Selectman Emery?
Yes.
Selectman Edenberg?
Edinburgh, yes.
Selectman Hashmi?
Yes.
Selectman Johnson?
Yes.
And Selectman Marshall, yes, 5005 being present. Of course, after the screen share, everyone's face moved around, so that was sort of like a little twister in the moment here. Okay. Okay, so I know John Gallina, has he joined us, Alan?
Oh, so I guess John is, has a Veterans Advisory Board meeting tonight, so I can present it.
Okay, that's great.
So this is a request to place flags on the Rotary as we've done before. We've done it in the past for several events. We most recently did it for Memorial Day. And so the request is, I don't have the dates, but to place them on the Rotary to celebrate Veterans Day.
Yep, so just for everyone's benefit, it would be placing the flags on the Rotary on Saturday, November 7th, and then they would be removed on November 14th. And both events would be placing them or removing them around 9:00 AM. So, okay. Do I have a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the request of the Veterans Advisory Board to place flags on the Rotary in honor of Veterans Day with the flag set back from the roadway approximately three feet.
Emery.
I second that.
Second. Okay.
Okay, good. Lee, all right.
Sayad, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Sayad, thank you. Any questions, comments, discussion? Okay. Roll call vote. Selectman Emery?
Emery, yes.
Selectman Hashmi?
Yes.
Selectman Edenberg?
Edinburgh, yes.
And Selectman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
And Selectman Marshall, yes, 5005 being present. Excellent. Okay, super. Hi, Justin, how are you tonight?
I'm doing very well. Thank you for having me.
Great. Thanks for joining us. So our next agenda item is that we have a presentation, discussion, vote on the Veterans District, or for, excuse me, Veterans District update and request for renewal of that district. So, welcome.
Thank you. So the district has been in operation, I believe, since 2013. Two years ago, in 2018, we requested a renewal. All four towns decided unanimously to renew, and that was then sent up as a memo on letterhead to the Department of Veteran Services at the state level. I apologize, I had to come out into my vehicle because my children are running around very loudly inside. So I apologize for the rain. It's raining at my house here. I hope it's not.
No apologies necessary.
Well, we're happy to have some rain. We need it.
Yeah. So our district was approved for two years. November 30th, 2020, it will, it will come up for, well, comes up for renewal this November. So we need to have it requested by November 30th to renew if all four towns so choose. And I believe all four towns, town managers or assistant town managers have had the request go to the board for approval at the Board of Selectmen meeting. And this is, I believe, my first of four meetings to speak with the different boards or select, or select boards and answer any questions you may have, give you a short just update. So our district has been operating myself, full-time director. I have a part-time agent, John Gallina, who also participates in Westboro on the Westboro Veterans Advisory Board. And I have a part-time agent, Mike Perna, who mostly works out of Shrewsbury. And both of them have been fantastic. We've served, we've served many veterans, especially during the COVID crisis by telephone, email, or mail. We are moving, we have moved mostly to a remote platform to serve them, and it seems to be going pretty successfully. And now that some of the towns are transitioning back to a workforce in the Town Hall, both my part-time agents are working full-time in the Town Hall, and I am working remotely within the district, as it may be, wherever I'm needed day-to-day. We have about 30, actually, we have about 40 cases now for Chapter 115. That is 40 lower-income veteran families who qualify for financial assistance through Master in Law, Chapter 115. And I'm guessing we'll have a few more once the pandemic unemployment assistance, PUA, runs out for some of our veterans that lost their employment during the pandemic. But it shouldn't jump up too high. Although historically during the wintertime, that thing in Shrewsbury does get a few more customers, so that may, that may go up again come the colder months. Does the board have any specific questions for me? That, that pretty much is my summary update, without getting into the weeds.
Oh, thank you very much, Justin. Really appreciate that update. Questions from the board? No.
Would you like a motion, Chair?
I would, I would love a motion.
I move, Emery, I move to renew the Central Massachusetts Veteran Services District and authorize the Chair to send the attached letter to the State Department of Veteran Services for the purpose of renewal.
Edinburgh, second.
Thank you. Seconded. Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Just great. Appreciate, Justin, of the work you and your agents do. It's important work, and I think doing this regionally has really worked out well for the four towns. So I'm glad that we have the chance to have it in front of us to renew and hopeful that we'll vote in favor of it.
Absolutely. I think we're all echoing and nodding with, to the great work that's being done. And even since the, the letter was written, it sounds like there's been a little bit of a bump up in those receiving Chapter 115. So it speaks to the, the volume of work that's there and, and the support that's needed. So thank you. And just to remind the public, I don't know that we said it, but the regional arrangement that we're in is with Grafton, Shrewsbury, and Northborough, just for everyone's benefit. Okay. So we have a motion and a second roll call vote. Selectman Emery?
Emery, yes.
Selectman Hashmi?
Yes.
Selectman Edenberg? Sleckman Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
Sleckman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
And Sleckman Marshall, yes. That's 5005 being present. And Justin, well, I think that's all. I will let you head out quickly into the rain and into dry chaos.
Thank you very much for having me. The rain did stop conveniently, so I will take advantage of that.
Then, it might be quieter here, so you're welcome to stay on with us.
Right.
Thank you again. And it's my honor to serve Westboro and your veterans, my veterans, as I look at them. So thank you very much, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, great. The next agenda item is a request to appoint members of the Community Preservation Act Committee and Exploratory Committee, excuse me. So Kristi, can you open that up for us?
Yeah, just calling it up. So we had a request from, for the, sorry, for the Community Preservation Act Committee. The candidates from the following committees have been nominated. So we have Sleckman Lee Emery, Mark Silverberg from the Open Space Preservation Committee, and the Planning Board. If you remember, we said that it could be the same person because they have, we knew that there was a possibility that we would have someone with dual representation. From the Affordable Housing Group was Leah McLean. And then the Historical Commission's Jennifer Doherty, and Recreation Commission, Colleen Dowd. And then there are two residents who are interested in the committee, which is Adam Last and Chris, Chris Allen.
Yep. Okay. Lee, I know that you've long been a proponent, involved with this historically in the town. Is there anything you'd like to add to the background or?
I'm just so glad they were picking it up again. I think it was 12 years ago that we tried to do it and weren't able to. It could have been eight, but it was quite a long time ago. And I'm so pleased that Chris Allen and Adam Last have volunteered because they will be two wonderful additions to the committee. It's really great.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I will move to appoint members from the Memo to the Community Preservation Act, Exploratory Committee for an indefinite term.
I second that, Lee Emery.
Okay. Any questions, comments, discussion? All right, seeing none. Sleckman Emery?
Emery, yes.
Sleckman Hashmi?
Yes.
Thank you. Sleckman Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
Sleckman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
And Sleckman Marshall, yes. And I want to thank all, everyone for volunteering. Those that are currently serving and those that have raised their hand to serve again. So that's going to be a great committee. Can't wait to hear the updates coming out of that. So thank you very much. Okay, let's see here. We also have, in the same agenda item, we have a request to appoint Ali Kashmari to the Youth Commission. And I did see that our Director of Youth and Family Services, Kara Presley, has joined us.
Hello.
Hey Kara, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Fantastic, thank you. Do you want to just give us, I mean, we have an update in the packet for the public's benefit, just a little update on why this appointment and Mr. Kashmari.
Sure. Well, Ali has persistently expressed interest in being a part of the Youth Commission. And we had the opportunity to meet him along with another applicant two months ago. And then again, this month, and, or in our last meeting. And both times, our, the Youth Commission members were really delighted with him. And it was sort of a neck and neck of vote the last time that, that, the time before last that he met with us. But this time around, we were very pleased to have the Youth Commission vote to recommend him to you all to be appointed. Ali is a somewhat recent resident of Westboro. He and his family moved here not long ago. He is a pharmacist. We are excited about the perspective that he will bring to the Youth Commission. That is one that we don't have from the healthcare realm. And we're just eager to see how he will contribute to the rest of the group.
I'd like to make that motion, Madam Chair, if it's possible.
Oh, you may make it.
I, I move to appoint Ali Kashmari to the Youth Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Emery second.
2022.
2022, sorry. June 20th, it's, yeah.
Yep, that's fine.
We're looking forward, we're not looking backward.
All right, moved and seconded. Any comments, questions, discussion?
I was very impressed with this background.
And, and his interest, I've been, his persistence is, testifies to, I think, his interest in this position and the impact he'll bring. So I think kudos to Kara and the Youth Commission for this choice. I look forward to seeing what he has to contribute.
Great. Okay. So we're around. Sleckman Emery?
Emery, yes.
Sleckman Hashmi?
Yes.
Sleckman Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
On mute, sorry. Sleckman Johnson, yes.
I saw it, I didn't hear it. Sleckman Marshall, yes. 5005 being present. Okay. So before we jump into our next agenda item, which is, we'll continue with Ms. Presley on the Interface Referral Service. I have to jump off for a 6 o'clock to go over to the Veterans Advisory Board to do a brief presentation. So I'm going to hand the gavel. Do you have it, Alan? You got it? Okay. Over to Alan to take the, take on the meeting here so I don't have to interrupt the discussion. And then when I reconvene, he's promised to give it back. If not, we'll have a wrestling match. All right, thanks, Alan. Sorry?
It sounds like a coon.
No, more like a 25th Amendment thing.
You promised a smooth transition of power. Alan, you're on, thank you.
Okay, so with Kara Presley here, and she asked for an opportunity to present and provide us with an update on the Interface Referral Service. So I will, I will not pontificate, I'll hand it off to her.
Sure, thank you. I am glad to be here. I actually had intended to come and see you all much sooner than this because I'm going to report on our interface utilization during the time period that ended in May. We will soon have another report coming out after, after November, in December. But the results were still so interesting that I wanted to share them with you. And just, it gives me an opportunity to talk to you about mental health in our community as well. So thank you for having me. I'm going to share with you, I, I gave in your packet a document that shares some statistics, but I thought I would share it on the screen if I'm able to. Do I just hit the present now icon? Awesome.
Yes, you do.
All right. So this is a report about interface utilization in Westboro. For those who might not know, interface, starting in July of last year, Westboro subscribed with the help of the Westboro Public Schools to Interface Referral Service, which is a service run out of William James College in Newton that is designed to give municipalities free referrals, free connections to outpatient mental health resources. And thank you to you all for agreeing last year to support Youth and Family Services and the Westboro Public Schools in signing on to the service. And we have now just under a year's worth of data that I want to share with you. All right, for some reason, we're going backwards, which is unclear to me. So forgive me. All right. Not sure why the order, anyway. So we had in, from July to May, which is the last reporting period, which was the whole year, rather, we had 65 people call Interface Referral Service from Westboro. This is what's remarkable about this. During the first few months, there were 22 callers, which is right on par. It's exactly where we want to see for our cost-effectiveness. But then, from December to May, we saw that number almost double. And most of those calls came during the March to May period, which, as we all know, was the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I just took this quote right from the report from Interface, which I thought was important to share with you. While many communities experienced a decline in requests for referrals from Interface during the COVID-19 pandemic, this was not the case in Westboro. And they just wanted to remark to us that they know that when people's immediate needs are better met, they're better able to attend to their mental health and emotional needs. So I think that might speak to something about how we're handling things in Westboro. You know, we had a really quick and active response to the pandemic and especially in addressing people's basic needs in Westboro. And I'm hoping that that is part of the reason that people felt like they could address their mental health needs as well. So just to break it down, we pay $13,000 a year for the subscription. Not a tiny amount of money, but we are getting a tremendous value for what we are paying. They estimate with all of their overhead and their hourly wages, they pay their staff and the costs that go into making Interface run, that the cost per referral, per call is about $225, which means we got a $9,600 value for a five-month period, given the fact that we paid $13,000 a year. I think that's really remarkable. Just a few demographics about the calls. You can see the breakdown by age. It's hard to read, I'm sure, on the screen for you. So I'll, I'll highlight some of them. The folks being served, so this means that the callers would have been adults and they would have either been calling on behalf of themselves or on behalf of their minor child. So for the folks calling on behalf of their minor children was about 28%. About, just over 39% were calling on behalf of themselves. And, or 39% were calling on behalf of younger children, sorry. So 39% were calling on behalf of children ages six to 12. 28% were calling on behalf of teenagers, 13 to 17 years old. 23% were calling on behalf of themselves, ages 25 to 59. And the rest of the age categories are represented in the smaller pies, pie pieces. The vast majority of callers were identified as white or Caucasian, but we did have a mix of other people who identify as other races who also use the Interface Referral Service. And most of the callers to Interface were female identified. I am not surprised to hear that most of the callers learned about Interface through the schools. The schools have done an awesome promotion of Interface. I credit my co-leaison to Interface, Kim Tynan, for spearheading this effort. Kim is the clinical coordinator and the coordinator of social and emotional learning for the school department. And she is my partner in this, in this endeavor. And she also, as you know, has the backing and support of both Sherri Stevens, the Student Services Director, and Amber Bach, our superintendent. And these are the mental health reasons that people were identifying need for services. The primary reason that people were calling is because they were reporting experiencing anxiety or that their children were experiencing anxiety. After that, family-related issues, family-related conflict, and depression, followed up by behavioral issues, stress, and a smattering of other emotional, behavioral, and interpersonal issues. I apologize, this is where my order of things gets a little wacky. So with that, I, I wanted to take a minute to kind of talk about how we here, in addition to providing Interface as a service, are addressing the mental health needs that were just identified in the town. So as you know, Youth and Family Services offers, we offer free counseling to residents who are having a difficult time accessing services elsewhere. So for folks who don't have insurance or who don't have commercial insurance, who have tried Interface and still are having a hard time getting connected to services, whether it's because of the insurance or because of transportation difficulties or other reasons, we do offer free counseling. And we are taking referrals right now. So I want to encourage folks to contact us if they are looking for services from us. And we, one of the services that we have always offered is a mental health screening. And usually during October, we do an in-person, free, anonymous, or free confidential, mental health screening in our office. It's not possible right now. So instead, I decided that Youth and Family Services would subscribe to a new service through a, through a program called MindWise out of Riverside Community Care. And this is a free mental health screening online that you can access using the URL that's listed here. So hopefully, you've seen these flyers around on social media and in other places. And just so the public can see, on the flyer is this URL, which will connect people to a very easy mental health screening. You can do it on your smartphone, you can do it on your computer or tablet, as long as you have internet access. People can screen for all kinds of different mental health issues, depression, anxiety, behavioral health issues such as substance use, use and misuse. They can screen for issues around eating disorders. There are a number of different screenings. They are geared for adults or for adults who would be completing a screening on behalf of their children. And when, I think I stopped sharing. When someone completes a screening, they will land on a resource page that has Youth and Family Services information right at the top, explaining what we do and how to access us. It encourages people to call us if they want to discuss the results of their screening and have a consultation about what their findings are. And it also has information about how to connect to Interface as well as a whole list of additional mental health and behavioral health resources. So I just want to encourage all of you to check that out, to please share it with your friends and neighbors. You do not have to be a Westboro resident to access the screenings on our mental health screening site. You can be from anywhere. Of course, we do, I do want to point out that Interface Referral Service is for Westboro residents exclusively as our Youth and Family Services direct services. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew what was going on, that you knew that Interface is being well utilized and it seems to be really worth our investment. And I hope it is something that we will continue to utilize. We've made a commitment, the Westboro Public Schools has made a commitment to paying for the first two years of the, of the contract with them, of the subscription, the $13,000 a year, after which time, we are hoping and expecting that the town will take over payment for that. So just wanted to give you a report. And when we get that additional report in December, which will have the utilization for the most recent months, I will make sure to share those highlights with you, probably through the town manager's report, or town manager's report to you as well. I welcome your comments and questions.
Thank you very much. I was just going to open it up. Does anyone on the board have any comments or questions? Ian?
Yeah, Kara, thanks for the, the update. And, you know, really happy to see the utilization. Happy to find out the right word. You know, it's good to see the utilization that we're providing that and it's a service being used. I guess the one question I have for you, and again, I'm happy with the partnership. You know, the numbers with a lot coming from the schools. Any thoughts through your department or the, the Youth Commission of ways to perhaps maybe better advertise the service through, through your office and your commission? So we, you know, get more utilization of it and kind of equal utilization kind of coming from the towns that are first of the schools?
Absolutely. I am happy to think about that and strategize about it with you because I too have a desire to boost the referrals coming from the town end of things. Certainly, we have since getting this report, we have upped our promotion on our social media. But we don't have a huge following on social media, so that's something that we are looking at in the kind of big picture way of how do we improve that. But also, I intend to have Christie's share on the town's social media more often than we have. I am trying to share with other departments regularly so that they are getting the word out on our behalf as well. That's part of the reason I wanted to come here tonight, because I know that you have quite the following here. Shelby's not on right now, but I have talked on her, the Frank and Mary Show before, and I think that I also want to make it more known to seniors. So I'll be talking to Alma about how we can utilize the senior center to disperse this information as well. Right before COVID hit, we got a whole stack of promotional cards printed with about Interface that we were going to distribute, and then we weren't distributing paper anything for a long time. And now I think people are more comfortable distributing paper items, but trying to figure out the best way to get those out when we aren't doing a lot of face-to-face contact with folks. So I hope to drop off a stack of them for law enforcement, to the police department, so that they can distribute them, make sure that the fire department has some as well. But if you all have more ideas about ways to promote, I welcome them absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Lee?
Hi, Karen. I just want to commend you and your staff for the vibrancy of the services that you are providing, you know, the vibrancy of your group, but also the innovative things that you're doing, things we'd never explored before. So the sort of scope of things you've been adding to Youth and Family Services, I think, is remarkable and admirable. And I want to thank you all for your creativity and persistence in finding new things to do and publicizing them.
Thank you, Lee. I appreciate that. We're trying to get creative this time in the world. Calls for it.
Sayed, any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Alan. So Karen, you know, this is critical work. And one of the things that, you know, concerns me is the iceberg effect. You know, I'm glad you're capturing these people, which is wonderful. And but it follows on to what Ian was raising is that I'm worried there's much more. And last, I believe, I'm sorry, the meetings kind of run together. So I think we had the police chief here, I think, last week or something. And he was mentioning that the rate of overdoses had, you know, had also increased in Westboro. I think he mentioned a number of like 93 as compared to last year. And so one of the things I'd run across and I think I shared it with you was an article from the Journal of the American College of Surgeons, which had talked about, and this is again for trauma patients, of outreach to those trauma patients to follow up. So my question is, not that you don't have enough work on your hands and the police don't have enough work on their hands, is there some mechanism of us identifying potentially without breaking confidentiality or something, identifying high-risk individuals in Westboro and potentially setting up a system whereby we check on them or in some fashion?
You know, I mean, that is a question that actually came up. For those of you who sit with me on the COVID Task Force, it's something that came up to that task force as well as how do we kind of proactively identify folks who may be at high risk and reach out to them? And as I said at that-
Sorry, Karen, but also those that have already injured them, that have proven that they're high risk.
Oh, who have already. I don't even know where to start with that. You know, I am, as you know, as a healthcare provider, we are so restricted by HIPAA and also just our ethical mandates to protect people's privacy and confidentiality that I would be really hesitant to kind of think of a way that, that, I mean, I wouldn't even ask Chief Laurie or Chief Purcell to give me the identifying information. Not that they could, but that to give me the identifying information of people who have been in crisis and the way that they see them because of, out of respect for people's confidentiality. But our experience is also that with our particular type of service that is limited to outpatient services, either in the office or at this point via telehealth or phone, we find that the likelihood of people engaging in our services comes from if people reach out to us. When we have reached out to others, it usually kind of ends at a dead stop. Not that it's not worthwhile because we may be planting a seed that will encourage people to reach out later, but I haven't figured out a way to do outreach in a way that's effective.
So that's actually a really interesting person. So what you're saying is the most effective use is when people tap, reach out to you yourselves, not the other way around. Is that right?
Yes, yes.
And we know that the two chiefs, staff are giving information to people, as Sayed said, that have been identified. It's not likely, could be at risk. They've already shown that they're risky. So I would imagine that they give information to everybody that they feel should have and about which they can do without violating HIPAA or anything. And I guess you don't know whether your referrals came from them or not because the person might not tell you. And you're not going to find out how many people decided not to take advantage of what the fire or police chief's crew gave them, so.
Right. But I can say, I can say very clearly that we have received recent referrals from first responders, people who have called us, who've gotten information about us from first responders. So I do know that those are working. It's just few and far between. I mean, I am just, oh, one thing I wanted to share with you, I forgot to write down the numbers exactly. But this mental health screening that we've put out, we've had 50 people take screenings in four days' time. That is, I'm blown away by that number. When we do in-person screenings, we have had a really successful in-person screening day is when we have a dozen people come to our office for those screenings. I mean, we're just blown away when we have that many people come in person. So it speaks to the stigma, which addresses what Sayed's speaking to. And I think it even talks about sort of what the issue that Ian's speaking to. I think the schools in Westboro are doing a darn good job of like talking about mental health and making that part of the curriculum and making it part of everyday conversation. I'm in the schools talking about mental health all the time. I think in the larger community, we still have a lot of stigma that we're up against. And the opportunity that people have through this mental health, online mental health screening to be totally anonymous and not be obligated to talk to anybody about the results is what really encourages people to reach out and get that help. I was noticing like there were 50 people who took all these screenings. And one of the screening questions is, are you going to reach out for help? Only two people of those 50 respondents said, yes, I am. Either, most people didn't answer the question at all. So we're up, we're still, we have a long uphill battle with the stigma. But we're finding these little ways to kind of chip away at it, I guess. Sayed, if you come up with any great ideas that are respectful of people's confidentiality about outreach, I'm open to it for sure.
And one of the things I think, just thank you, just one other comment I would just make, you know, it's communities frequently, and since I come from a South Asian background, we are less likely to seek help, more likely to internalize, which is long-term neither healthy for us nor for the community. So that is something I'm going to have to, I'm trying to figure out how we can do that. Maybe we can work on that at some point.
Well, so I will make another brief like announcement about something that we're doing in conjunction, our department with the Westboro Public Schools. We have created a monthly community wellness guide. We have published, the first installment was published in September. The second installment will likely come out later this week, if not the very beginning of next week. And we're addressing issues of mental health, racism, and equity, and the overlap of those issues, recognizing that in communities more affected by racism and communities of people of color are disproportionately impacted by the negative, disproportionately experiencing the negative mental health effects of COVID-19, for example. But we also know in the grand scheme overall that they are disproportionately or similarly impacted by mental health issues across the board, but disproportionately don't have access to mental health resources. So that is something, when I look at the Interface numbers, you know, we have, you know, our statistics vary, but let's estimate a quarter to a third of the population of Westboro identifies as people of color. And we know that that's not the proportion that's using Interface. It's also not the proportion that's using Youth and Family Services, although we do serve a number of people of color. It's still not proportionate to the population. So I think that's something for us to look at on a very big picture way, to look at sort of the systemic racism and that we have just built into our systems of mental health. But also are there ways that we, as a department and as a town, can continually improve our outreach to marginalized communities in order to ensure that they have equal access and are equitably using our, the services that we do have to offer? So that's an ongoing conversation for all of us and one that I'm having in the Youth Commission and Diversity and Inclusion and in my partnership with the schools.
Okay, thank you. And I do a quick comment, which is this is fabulous work. And it's good to see that the services are in place. And seeing the increase in need and use of the services that they were in place before. We saw an increase in need and not just in reaction to what's happening. From the expanding awareness and utilization, a couple of things. You mentioned that oftentimes with Interface referral, transportation might be an issue. I'm hoping that the VIA, shared van service, can help eliminate that or reduce that as an issue by providing an affordable option. But I'm wondering, in building awareness, if in addition to the cards, there might be posters that could be put in, you know, on a public bulletin board in the library, provided to the management companies of some of the apartment complexes where we have, you know, diverse populations living. And even maybe an active effort of reaching out to the Interface Leadership Group and, you know, providing them with awareness and education so they can share it with their own congregants and with members of their communities as well as a way of expanding some of the outreach. So just my few thoughts there.
I appreciate that. We have some, some of those ideas are kind of works in progress and some of them are new and worth exploring. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any final questions or comments or we'll thank Ms. Presley for a great presentation and wonderful service.
Thank you all.
And we'll welcome Shelby back too.
Good evening.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. Okay, so now I will hand the baton back to Shelby.
Okay, I'm catching it. Oh, just.
A peaceful transition of power.
See, just like that. All good. Great. I presume we're wrapping up with Karen. We're ready to go into our-
Eli Whitney.
Yeah, great. So let me, sorry, my iPad timed out here. Let me pull that back up. All right. So well, this agenda item is for us to accept the deed to property and to authorize the chair to execute closing documents. We did meet previously in executive session to discuss this. Christie, is there anything else I should add?
I don't think so. You know, certainly we saw the support for this agenda item at town meeting. And we're, with the purpose of having that special town meeting was to move to closing expeditiously, which we anticipate happening next week.
Yeah. Very exciting, a unanimous vote in town meeting. So thank you, Ian.
Yeah, I tried hard on that one, you know.
Would you like a motion?
I would. Thank you.
Okay. I move pursuant to the vote taken under Article One of the September 29, 2020 Special Town Meeting to accept the deed to Lot One at Eli Whitney Street for general municipal parking conservation and passive recreation purposes and to execute and to authorize the chair to execute on behalf of the board any acceptances, settlement statements, and other documents necessary or appropriate to consummate the acquisition.
Emery's second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? Okay, seeing none. Selectman Emery?
Emery, yes.
Selectman Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
Selectman Hashmi?
Yes.
Selectman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
And Selectman Marshall, yes, 5005 being present. And-
So that was the motion for the cutout portion. We can do now parcel A for conservation. So I move pursuant to the vote taken under Article One of the September 29, 2020 Special Town Meeting to accept the deed to parcel A at Eli Whitney Street for conservation and passive recreation purposes, with the Conservation Commission having care, custody, and control thereof under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8(c), and to authorize the chairman to execute on behalf of the board any acceptances, settlement statements, and other documents necessary or appropriate to consummate the acquisition.
Emery's second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right.
Big smile on Lee's face.
I'm so sorry I missed that town meeting.
Well, you were there with us every step of the way. Selectman Emery?
Yes.
Selectman Edinburgh?
Yes.
Selectman Hashmi? We'll come back. Selectman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Selectman Hashmi?
He appears to be off the call.
Oh, okay. I just see him on mute there. Okay.
I'm not seeing him.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, then Selectman Marshall is a yes, so that's 4004 being present. Well done.
Selectman Hashmi's back on my screen.
Okay, we'll give him a minute. Sayed, if you are there and can come off mute, we have a motion for parcel A. Just want to give you a chance to vote. Okay, we can, we can capture that if he comes back on. Just might have a technical issue there. Okay, well, big congratulations. Congratulations, Christie, Kim, everyone else who has been part of this process, conservation, town planner, planning boards, Ian, you really led the way for us, working with Christie. I feel guilty signing when you did the work, but you know, you know, I don't know what to say, but thank you. This is, this is a big deal for us as a town. And as was evidenced by the turnout at a special town meeting and the unanimous votes, we should be very, very proud of the work and legacy that as a town we are leaving behind. This is, this is why we do it, right?
Absolutely.
Feel good to know. Okay.
Sort of administratively, if the deeds are available for your signature in the town clerk's office and they have to be notarized, they'll need to do that in front of the town clerk. And so we'll need you to do that. If you can, if you can come in tomorrow and do that in the town clerk's office, then we can get all of the documents, the town council, again, to execute the closing planned for Tuesday, October 20.
So Christie, so we all have to do that or is it just Shelby that needs to sign?
I'll hear.
You know, the vote we gave her the authority there.
It's just for, let me confirm with town council and I'll let you know.
Okay, just let us know and I can definitely make it in sign if necessary.
All right, thank you.
All right, great. Let us know, Christie, and do let me know when the closing is so that I show up. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, we have the Fall Town Meeting warrant. And I'm going to turn it over to Christie to bring us kind of current because there have been a few changes to the warrant.
Yep. I'm going to pull the warrant up.
Christie, while you're doing that, Sayed, are you back on? Oops.
Yeah. Toby, yes, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. I just wanted to give you an opportunity. We, you voted on the Eli Whitney parcel one and then we lost you for the parcel A for conservation. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to vote.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So that was five, zero, zero, then, Seela, five being present for that vote. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Said. Okay.
Great. So we had initially intended to, we talked about closing the warrant tonight, but we did have a lot of changes over the last few days and so we're going to finalize it next week. But I'm just going to kind of go over some of the changes. One, you can see here that we changed the town meeting date to November 7th at 9:00 a.m. I just found out today that with all sort of the rescheduling with events at the high school, it was missed when we initially checked that there's actually going to be SATs that that day. So everyone's, you know, still in favor of moving forward with November 7th. There'll be about 250 students taking their SATs that who might start arriving between 8:00 and 8:30. And then they need to be in their rooms by 8:45 to do their SATs. I've, I've reached out to the town moderator, the town clerk, and then also I sent it to the chair, just to let you know that this potential conflict was happening. The superintendent is working with staff at the high school to designate parking for the students taking their SATs. She's, she's willing to to go forward for the, with the 9:00 a.m. start or we could stagger it to 9:30. I know the town clerk was trying to get on. I'm not sure if she did, but I know she was fine with moving ahead with the 9:00 a.m. start. So that's the very first change that you see here. So I don't know if the board wants to discuss now.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about the time now and just get that out of the way. So do you have comments about the start time at nine? Yes, Ian, please.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my take is about closing the warrant. I would suggest we move it and whether it's 9:30 or perhaps even 10:00, but I think just to make it, make it work, because people do show up early for the meeting and if it's the same time with insufficient inclusion and social distancing concerns, et cetera, I would, I would personally recommend that we move it just to to separate it out a little bit more.
I agree with Ian. Give them a little more space there.
I would concur with that, just knowing that you'll have students coming in probably both the front doors as well as the same doors or the same area, the parking lot, avoiding the crossover and the confusion. I know that getting the students into their rooms for the SAT involves direction and escort and things of that nature. So there'll be a lot going on there and it, and don't want to add to our stress, don't want to add to the students' stress either.
Correct.
So is that a 9:30 start?
I, I would suggest 10:00 a.m.
I would suggest 10:00 as well. I think 10:00.
Yeah.
Even number. And I think the more people have gotten their kids off, you know, the house has gotten settled, they can get there at 10:00.
Okay. I will change it to 10:00 then.
Okay.
Article one remains the same. Article two is the adjustments to operating budgets. We talked about all of those when we had our joint meeting with the Finance Committee, except one thing has come up since then that we would be proposing on the 7th, and that is increase to our legal budget. As the board has, is considering becoming an intervenor, has voted to become an intervenor in the ever source filing at TPU, one of the things that we recognize that we need is to hire an expert that can help us analyze the information that's, that's filed at TPU as part of their application. So I'm reaching out now to see what that number looks like, but based on some preliminary conversations with other communities, it could be about $25,000.
Well worth it.
The Country Club Operating Committee budget, prior to this version of the warrant, it said a sum of money. We met with the Country Club Operating Committee representatives, Recreation Department, and we, we have the number now, so the $90,709 from retained earnings. And this goes back to the changeover from the contract model to the employee model.
So, I'm sorry, Christie, what's that? Apologies, I don't have my prior copy in front of me. What's the delta change from last warrant?
The prior copy just said a sum of money.
Okay.
This is the first time we've put a number to it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Sorry.
And I mean, just I think from a free cash perspective, too, there's somewhere north of 120,000 that was certified, so this is not using all of their kind of retained earnings for this. There will still be some money left there.
The rescinding of the borrows, so this, the, as of today, this table has not changed, though I did let the board know that we have received an email back from the seller at the Mill Road property, which is this second to last line. My recommendation at this point would be to let, allow the board to continue to have that discussion, talk to Open Space Committee, in that we would just take this off of the warrant at this time. You know, certainly something that we could do at a future town meeting.
May I make a comment?
Yeah, of course.
I read the back and forth, Christie, and I have, I've spoken to a couple of people on the Open Space Committee, and I think I'll let them speak for themselves, but I think this has been years in the process, that there's nothing in the emails that was compelling in any way about the seller wanting to go ahead. It was all kind of a little of this, a little of that, more, I felt, delaying tactics. And I think we have other land purchase priorities that Open Space and Conservation and other people, Planning Board, Strategic Planning, may want to be looking at and having this sort of just sitting out there in the background is obfuscating and could be slowing things down. So I think, I certainly am going to recommend that we take it, that we rescind the borrowing on this, and I'm hopeful that we will hear support in that direction from the other, like Open Space and people that are important, probably more important, maybe, well, I don't know if they're more important than Selectman on this particular issue, but I certainly want to hear from them. So I wouldn't vote to take it off, but you've got on here today. I would just leave it right there.
Okay, so we can leave it on the warrant and continue to have discussions with those groups. Article five hasn't changed. Article six, which is all of the capital plan documents, this hasn't changed since the last version, but just a reminder that we did remove one of the subsections of the article because of the grant that was obtained by the DPW. Longest article. Article seven, this previously said T mower. Now it says Greens Mower. In meeting with the Country Club Operating Committee, they stated that it's really a Greens Mower that they would be replacing, and they also updated the cost based on increases since we, they initially had asked for the funding. So it went from 42,000 to 46,000 here. Article eight is for a golf cart lease term of five years. This is similar to what we just saw at the special town meeting related to the water treatment operator contract, where town meeting has to vote on anything that's over three years. And looking at, so previously the contractor, the contracted golf manager would contract to, to lease the golf carts. Now, because the town's bringing it in-house, we're, we're the ones who will have to contract to lease the golf carts and, and looking at getting quotes for different lengths of the lease agreements, the five-year lease agreement, we've recognized substantial savings. So I think it was about $7,500 a year over the term of the lease. Article nine is the town water system improvements, which the DPW director spoke to you about at the last meeting. That has not changed, just updated based on review by bond counsel. Article 10 is the acceptance of the section of law to create an affordable housing trust. Selectman Edinburgh and I have been working with town council because based on the Declaration of Trust documents, we also would need, in the same article, to adopt a bylaw. So there's language here related to what the bylaw is proposed as. I don't want to speak for Selectman Edinburgh, but really it's the same presentation that he's given to your board and others on the intent of how the Affordable Housing Trust would work, and it's just put into the bylaw. So I don't know.
So what, what this lets us do is, in addition to accepting Mass. General Law, this codifies the additional oversight that we've proposed for the trust, where the Board of Selectmen has the ability to concur or block certain types of transactions based on the commitment of trust assets. And so this gives us the ability to set that. The exact same language will be in the Declaration of Trust that gets filed, and that way, should the town decide to modify that oversight, they could do so in the future as well.
Christie, just one comment, and I know that Alan put it in this way, but in the title of the article, right now it's showing up in all caps, which I don't think is consistent with the way others are, so.
And I want to thank Christie and Alan for the incredible amount of work to get this where it is on the warrant. It's a pretty complicated issue. Thank you.
Okay. I will fix that. Article 11 is the same article that you previously seen, which is, that follows the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust, and that's funding of the Affordable Housing Trust, and that's that $642,000 payment we initially received from the Delaware Chauncey Lake variance that went into free cash and that we would be asking town meeting to appropriate for the Affordable Housing Trust funding. Article 12, as the board recalls, earlier this year, we, you approved licenses for the utilities at Eli, at 50 Eli Whitney Street related to the failed school project, understanding that at the next town meeting, we would be requesting that the board grant the easements, permitting. Article 13 is amending the general bylaws, which is the Community Development Department. Previously, we had recommended that we sort of shift, we put it in an article that had an existing title instead of a reserved article, so we've moved that around to shift it to Article 18, which is already available. And then one of the things in the first section, it had not previously been clear that the Community Development Director is appointed by the town manager, which is consistent with how the finance director and the majority of the department has their appointment. And then the last one is the Community Development Director salary, which is that $5,500 to elevate the Building Commissioner to the Community Development Director position, which is not changed. So that's, that's all the changes in the warrant. As soon as I have a number for that legal budget, I will let the board know. No questions?
Okay. Shuffle some paper here. Yes, I'm sorry, Said, please, go ahead.
So correct me if I'm wrong, is there going to be another meeting next week to just close the warrant?
Correct, on the 20th.
Okay. I have a Board of Health meeting, so I may not be able to attend that, but I'll let you, I'll let you know. Can I, am I allowed to, like, email you my preferences or my votes?
No, unfortunately, you, you can't.
What time is the Board of Health meeting set?
It's at 5:30. Just go do your, just go do the meeting. It's, I mean, we need to get this thing done.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a very quick meeting. I think that's the only thing on the agenda, so if we can start right at 5:00, we could be done quickly.
Yeah, if we can do it at 5:00, I think, as I mentioned, I will have to, I can't be videoed in because I'll be in a car, but I can dial in at that.
Yeah, we will just have to quickly. I think we discussed all these articles and had a chance to review our questions, so it's really a formality to close.
Exactly.
If we do it at 5:00, it makes it so everybody can be there. That's good.
Yeah, right. All right, we'll do that inside. Hopefully you can join us, and if you can't, you've been through the process and you'll be at town meeting, so. Okay. All right. Okay. Okay, so our next agenda item is to amend the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. So Christie, like to take this, please?
Yeah. So as the board is aware, I've been working with, with sort of, with representatives from a few different committees, as well as, including the B-PAC, related to the Multi-Use Trail Feasibility Study. But in doing that work and working with the department, other department heads, it's sort of become clear that there are a significant number of transportation projects going on in town that really have a lot of overlap related to active transportation safety, which, you know, so that could be biking, walking. And so, you know, some examples of that are the sidewalk project that we've talked about, the corridor study, the feasibility study, the Complete Streets Group. And so in looking at all those and looking at sort of how all of those groups are communicating and also communicating through departments, because as you'll remember, the 2018 Strategic Plan calls for, calls for town employees to really take the lead on, on these projects. It seemed that we could really benefit by maybe expanding the existing Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee include, to include representatives from different departments and/or additional boards and committees. And that way we could really improve communication and, and really have an overall look at the plans for the town as we move forward. So also included in that is the Subcommittee on Transportation and the Master Plan. And so my, my memo, which I'm happy to, to post online, really just sort of lists all of those projects. I'm sure that I don't even have them all, but, and all the groups that we're talking about being responsible for those projects. So my proposal, and I have talked to all of the impacted department heads, they've actually all reviewed the memo, as well as the Chair and Vice Chair of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, is to rename the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to the Active Transportation Safety Committee and really pull in all of those things that we're talking about, complete streets and the, and the trail, and even the Public Safety Committee, which looks a lot at pedestrian safety, requests for crosswalks, additional signage, things like that. Pull all those groups together and amend the mission so that they're able to look into all of these things and be effective and communicate appropriately. And so currently, the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee is a committee of seven members. There's one vacancy on that committee. My proposal is to increase the membership to 11 members, which I understand is a, is a very large committee. And, and it could be that over time, you know, we start to identify, you know, different people that should be on the committee or how we might change that makeup going forward, but that would really work to include all of the relevant departments, all of the relevant boards and committees. And so it would be five residents, which we have on the, on the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee that would remain. We actually have a sixth resident who is also a police officer in town, and one of my recommendations is that we have a police department representative, so hopefully the chief could work with that individual to serve in that capacity. And then also have a representative from DPW, representative from Conservation, representative from Planning, the Building Commissioner, and also representative from Fire. And so, you know, everyone is excited about this committee. I think, you know, people were feeling like this was a nice, this would be a good step forward for all of the projects that I mentioned. And then we would just amend, like I said, amend that, that mission. So I did give you a marked up version of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee mission that would include, you know, all of the goals that we're talking about. So I'm happy to answer any questions related to the memo I provided.
Thank you, Christie. Yes, Lee, please.
Hi. This is maybe a silly question, but what happened to BWALT? Is that the B-PAC, like, we just changed the name, or did BWALT disappear completely as a group, a working group?
The Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee was working on the BWALT trail, so I think it's the same.
Okay, thank you.
Shelby?
Yes, Lee, did you have any more questions? No? No, yes, Sayed and then Alan, please.
So a couple of things. One, the Active Transportation and Safety Committee is such a, makes me, reminds me of why government is such a painful topic sometimes. Can we potentially change it to like the Mobility and Safety Committee? I mean, just something that's maybe more palatable? That's my first, just first suggestion. The second is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, I don't think has any term limits. Every other committee has a certain date of appointments. And does the Bike and Pedestrian have, you know, a term limit?
So I can speak to both of your questions. As far as the name of the group, you know, I'm certainly open to suggestions. My understanding is that Active Transportation is sort of an industry standard for something that's not dealing with vehicle transportation. And so this group is not necessarily going to be dealing with vehicle transportation. So, but again, open to suggestions. Not that they wouldn't be involved in, you know, roadwork that would also include like a sidewalk or a bike path or something like that. And then to your second question, no, the B-PAC does not currently have any term limits. I did not speak to term limits in my memo because I know that the committee guidelines that we're working on will speak to term limits, so.
And that's one of my concerns with this committee as it currently constitutes, actually is perhaps my biggest concern with the committee, because once you get on that committee, you're on there indefinitely. And I'm just concerned that, you know, that if we're potentially setting up a new committee, then they should be, I would a, urge the Board that they should, we should, if this is a new committee, it's a new charge, it's a new mission. We should, I think we should open it up to town residents again. And that along with this, there should be term limits. If we are, I mean, this, granted, some of the old things are being continued, but it has a new mission, the mission has been broadened. There's all these other things that are being factored into it. So I would urge this Board that if all these other things are not being factored, I feel strongly that we should look at the membership again and definitely have a term limit. I mean, we just can't roll over the membership. I'm against that.
So Sayed, just before you comment, Alan, Sayed, just to be clear on that last comment you made, two different things. One is term limits, and then you said rolling over. So you're not suggesting we create, or I shouldn't say that. Are you suggesting with this change is a whole new solicitation, if you will, of interest from the community?
Yes, that's a, thank you, Shelby. I should have been, because it appears from Christie's comments that the members of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee will automatically be selected for this committee, which I, again, I disagree with. And with regards to the term limits, I'm sorry, I should be, can you, looking for the proper words? They should, I mean, just like we have, you know, a limited duration of how long somebody is, like for instance, on the Board of Health, it's a three-year term. It should be the same on this committee.
Okay, so none of your comments will continue the discussion, Alan?
So with respect to term of members on the committee that would not impact the town staff on the committee, because those are being appointed by commissions or department heads to fill that role. But as far as the five resident, with five residents, you'd most likely be looking at two-year terms with staggered reappointments. You could decide to do three years as we work to finalize the committee handbook and guidelines. I don't, in looking through, you know, the following activities, a couple of comments, and then I'll loop back and address Sayed's other point. One, I look at bullet point two, which talks about the rail trail or multi-use trail. It seems very specific to BWALT. I think it's important that either as part of that bullet point or there be an additional bullet point, looking at other trails, paths, routes, bike routes, et cetera, travel routes, you know, for general transportation and recreation, so that it's clear that the scope of this committee might be looking at other, you know, bike paths or commuter paths, trails, whatever, elsewhere in town that aren't necessarily BWALT or connected to the BWALT project. Additionally, we've got the bullet point here about coordinating with the MBTA, CMRPC, and the WRTA. I would add that there should be mention, if not in that bullet point, another one, include the Economic Development Committee and the Council on Aging, as the EDC has been involved through the Planning Department with the VIA project a little bit, and could help engage the transportation needs related to businesses and economic development. And the Council on Aging is providing transportation, Active Transportation Services. And so making sure that any future projects are done, at least in coordination or awareness with what's happening, so we have a coordinated effort. As far as, you know, this is, you know, for me, this is a consolidation of committees. I don't, in the clarification of the mission, I know that B-PAC has been involved on many of the items that are bullet pointed here. That would be their ideal activities already. And I see this as really clarifying their roles and responsibilities and reconstituting, really adding the town staff to make it smoother and a consolidation. I don't see this as an elimination of a committee and a creation of an entirely new entity. It really is a continuation of the work. I know there has been, I'd have to go back and look, but I know a number of positions on B-PAC have transitioned recently. There have been some new members coming on within the last six months to a year. I know there's still one vacancy that would disappear, but, you know, I'm comfortable that if we put in a term of service of, you know, two years alternating, that means of those five residents, two or three would then serve one year and the other two would serve two, and they'd be up for renomination or reappointment or those seats would be opened up for new participants who expressed an interest. So I'm sort of, you know, I'm for recruiting and bringing new members and new perspectives onto the committee, but I don't think we need to remove all five residents and start from scratch here.
So I'm just going to, just to comment on that. I think that we historically have kind of said, Jesus, it's often a difficult right to find folks who are interested in participating. And so I'm not for changing wholly, just kind of dumping out the apple cart, so to speak, just to put the apples back in it. I'm using apples because it's like one's on my desk here. So having said that, I do think it's important that with this change, because we are expanding the scope and we're consolidating, and there's lots more here, that we probably, I would be in favor of receiving confirmation from the existing residents that they understand what the new mission is and that they affirm that they still want to be part of this committee. Because they, they may say, well, given the change, that's kind of not what I signed up for. Or they may say, you know, definitely make sure I'm, you know, I'm on the list. So I don't think we should just kind of solicit new appointments. I'd always rather tap into the experience that's already there and then engage the public and new members. So just two cents on sort of both Sayed and Alan's comments. I saw Ian's hand and then Lee, please.
Yeah, I, sort of voice, I agree. I think this is a kind of repurposing and repositioning and kind of expansion of Bike and Pedestrian. But I guess to Selectman Hashmi's remarks, I'm not in favor of, you know, basically eliminating the people that have volunteered and have put work in in the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to kind of open it up to new. But I do, I am in favor of putting terms of service in. I think having it unlimited, you know, with the expansion of this committee and kind of where other committees are, it probably makes sense that we put terms of service in and would defer to Alan and Lee, who will work on the committee handbook as to whether that initial ones was two or three years, whenever. I'm fine, I think putting those terms of service, I would be in favor of that. But I think that keeping membership as is, as we transition it, makes a whole lot of sense because there's a lot of work that's going on and ongoing there. Shelby, to your point, I think that's probably fine to say, hey, there is, you know, some expansion here. And just making sure that they understand it and the ability to basically step away if they want to. But I am supportive of kind of rolling them in, expanding the committee as Town Manager has put out there. But I would not be in support of throwing out all the members and going out and resoliciting.
Lee? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Lee, before you, Christie had her handbook in between Alan. Did you want to, because there were a couple of comments there, Christie?
It's okay, I can go.
Okay, Lee, then Christie, sorry.
Yeah, I feel kind of ambivalent about this. I understand what Sayed is saying, and I agree with him that we need to, I agree with him that it seems more like a new committee than just a reorganization. However, Ian made a good argument for that. And Ian said there are a few people that have turned over recently, which I don't, I would like verified. But I think maybe a compromise is, as Shelby asked or suggested, that we ask the current members if they want to be part of this new committee. And I guess putting term limits right away on that would accomplish more of what Sayed wants in that, than you are forcing turnover. And to Ian's point, that they've done, that there's a continuity that could be lost and slow everything down while we're making this change in the structure. And it may be to our benefit to keep the people that are going to go over the hump with the change. They are knowing that within a year, a couple of them would be changed. So I guess I'm not going to agree with Sayed that we should completely start over, even though I think his point is well taken. But I think we have two ways to kind of compromise on that, and it's more to our benefit as a town to keep some stability there for this transition period.
Could I offer a compromise to the group, Shelby?
Yes, sorry, Sayed, I was talking to you. Go ahead.
So I hear what you're saying and the points that Ian and you guys have raised are good ones. So there's supposed to be five new members, sorry, five resident members, right?
Yep.
Yes, am I right?
Yep.
So why don't we do this, just to see what happens? Is that three of the current members of the B-PAC roll over to the current commission? That gives enough of the old, kind of the stability. And we at least, just for the first go around, at least elicit, what do you call it? Elicit from the town two new members. And by all means, if, you know, if nobody applies or there's a lack of response, fine. The other members of the committee can, you know, can join the committee. But at least on our end, we will have done our due diligence to make sure that we are bringing new voices. Granted, and so the expertise of the three other members will be there, who have worked on this, but at least we give, you know, because, you know, this committee has been static for a long time. Again, I don't know if there's been change in it or not, but I'm thinking, you know, this is an expanded scope of mission. And, you know, one of our big things that we keep talking about is new voices, new members. So let's try it. If we don't try it, we'll never know if it's going to work.
If I may.
I'd just like to go to Christie first because she had a point a little while ago, and I don't want to lose that in the conversation.
So first of all, I just want to clarify that the purpose of the amended mission is not to include, and I did say this, but I feel like it's come up again, is it's not to include vehicle transportation. So while coordination may occur related to transportation in general, it's not for, it's not to expand it to vehicle transportation. So I just want to be clear about that. I also just want to share my screen again because I think it's important that the Board look at. So this is, oh, sorry. So this is the memo that you all received in your packet. This mission with all of the bulleted activities is the mission that the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee was already given. So if we look through, that's why I marked it up. So you can see, if you look in the initial mission, we take out Bike and Pedestrian and we just call it Active Transportation because we want it to be all-inclusive. I don't think that the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, or I believe that that committee has already looked at other forms of transportation that we would expect them to continue to look at. So that's really just an update in term. That's also true of the first bullet. When we look at the second bullet, I think that we're just sort of clarifying what the expectation is related to the feasibility study, which is, which is new since this mission was created, and also the expectation in terms of working with Conservation and Planning. In the third bullet, we just add the Sanable Westboro. And then the third bullet is about unchanged. The fourth bullet really includes other departments. My point here is that I don't think it's a whole new committee. The purpose, the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has always had, has always been positioned to give information related to some of these things. I just don't think that the communication and, you know, sort of to them has worked very well. And I think part of that is because we haven't had the necessary boards and committees and departments represented. And so I would, you know, I'm not voting, obviously, but I would, I would say that, you know, my recommendation was definitely not to, you know, take anyone off of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. It was really to expand and clarify the scope of the B-PAC, changing the name so that it's not, so it's clear that it's not just, you know, Bike and Pedestrian, but also I really thought it was important to have the word "safety" in there. You know, I think that Shelby's suggestion is a good one. I mean, certainly possible that some of the existing residents are not going to be interested going forward. But I just wanted to make the point that I did work off of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee mission, current mission. And I don't think the changes are so significant that it really is a whole new committee.
So I just want to remind everyone sort of where we're at time-wise. We started this discussion almost 20 minutes ago. And so there have been a lot of comments. I took some notes here from Alan, I think, on item number two in terms of the new activities. You had added some language there that obviously isn't in the version that Christie just showed to us and as well as to number five. I have a, I have a, so I don't know, I don't know through you and Sayed if we're making motions here, we've made suggestions, but no motions. So the other thing is, Christie, I just want to clarify. When you say that there's, this does not include vehicle transportation. So using Alan's example of a kind of coordination with, let's say, the EDC and in particular, the Council on Aging. So being that there's an aspect of, I don't know, safety in this, so let's just say we were talking about putting in a new sidewalk crossing, right? Or like where people get picked up by a vehicle, but it's decreasing vehicular, single car, but, you know, increasing car pulling or something. That would not fall into the scope of this. I mean, doesn't that sort of kind of all fall under some of these other transportation projects?
So this.
Like when we talk about Master Plan and all that? I mean, I'm not sure how you exclude, totally exclude vehicular.
Well, I'm just, my, I guess my point is that this group isn't necessarily going to be responsible for the senior center bus routes or build, you know, what, which roads are going to, you know, are in need of repair or that type of sort of transportation. I mean, this group is really going to be more focused on, I mean, what you're talking about as far as a crosswalk or crossing. I mean, I think certainly this can develop, but I just don't want to make it appear that they're sort of taking on sort of all the road, every road project and every.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
They're taking on what was being. I think it takes on what was being proposed, so I do have a separate document.
Okay. Because the other one that I would add to number four would be, you know, inclusion of like some level of coordination with the schools, right? Because they have certainly, like walkers and bikers. So, so does anyone want to make a motion to the changes?
I think there's a lot of work. I mean, do we want to do this now? Or do we want to reword all these changes and then come and bring it back to the board? I'm just asking.
I mean, I'm comfortable in making a motion.
This number four is what you had mentioned earlier, Shelby. So I just added, I added this bullet three, which just encompasses all trails throughout town. Shelby asked me a question earlier about being more specific about complete streets, so that's added here. I added the school, and then the Economic Development Committee and Council on Aging.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Lee?
I move to change the name of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to the Act of Transportation and Safety Committee, and further to amend this committee's membership and mission as presented.
Okay, your motion?
Edinburgh seconds.
Okay.
An amended.
Just to be clear, would it be as amended here, Lee?
Yes, thank you, Ian.
My second.
Alan, yes, still on the second? I'm sorry.
Yes, still on the second.
So for purposes of discussion, we've had lots of conversation about term limits. I, oh, go ahead, Alan.
Well, I think we need to clarify terms. There's a difference between term limits and setting terms of office. Really talking about setting terms of office. As folks might remember, the draft we reviewed of the committee guidelines and procedures doesn't have hard term limits. It simply stipulates a certain level of recruitment as people have served multiple terms on a committee to see if other people are interested in taking those positions before we simply ask if someone wants to continue to serve and let them continue to serve if they do. So if we wanted to put in terms of office or terms of service onto this committee, again, with five residents, that would most typically be a two-year term, where, you know, alternating. So one year we'd reappoint or appoint two, another year we would do three. Given the timing, you might look and say, two members would, if they want to continue, would sign on for a term ending of June 30th of 2021, and the other three would go through June 30th of 2022.
I think that's beyond the scope of what we had on our agenda to vote on tonight. It was really just to change the name and the mission. I think we need to do the terms and term limits in a separate discussion.
So I'm going to disagree with you, Lee, in that I think it just says to amend the committee. But, you know, we've already heard from Slekman Hashmi that perhaps we need a little more time on this. Lee, you're kind of weighing into that effect.
I don't think we need more time on this specific thing that was put on our agenda for us to vote on. I think it's important that if we were going to change, set term limits and terms, that's a whole nother vote. I mean, that really deserves to be on the agenda as something that we're going to vote on, discuss and vote on. It's not, I don't find that included in amended committee mission.
Well, yeah, no, that's fine. But, you know, we, the agenda item is broad. The motion that we have in our packet speaks to amending the membership. So, so anyway, we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion on Lee's motion, which is to basically accept the name, the changes as amended as they've been presented, and the membership as presented, the membership construct of the committee, if you will? Any other further discussion? Okay. If there isn't, then we'll move to a vote on, you sound like John Arnold, on Slekman Emery's motion. Wow. Maybe I'll be moderator someday. I don't know about that. Okay, we'll start, Slekman Johnson.
Johnson, yes.
Slekman Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
Slekman Hashmi?
No.
No? Slekman Emery?
Yes.
And Slekman Marshall, yes. So we have four, one, zero on the motion. Okay. So, lead to your point, and Kristi, I think we do need to have some further discussion about the terms of the membership committee as a separate discussion. And I think this sort of ties into an open agenda item, which is the committee handbook. And, you know, how quickly we move that forward. We may be able to tie these two together. But I would rather, for the benefit of this committee, I would rather not wait. If that's going to take a little longer, I'd rather give this committee some clarity around terms. So we'll work on that sort of offline as we build the agenda for future meetings.
Sure. And I would just point out that there's, there are other committees that have indefinite term limits. So it might be a broader discussion than just this committee.
To your point, okay. Okay. All right. Well, I think this is, this is really, this is really progressive work. And Kristi, you may have mentioned this in the beginning of your presentation about the relevance to this change with the staffing study. If you did, I missed it. But I just want to bring that back kind of full circle for the community to understand, why are we having this conversation? Because, and I would encourage you to post this memo as amended, as part of kind of the board's work and your work. Because I think it's, when I read it, it's amazing, the amount of transportation work, related work that is going on in this town, and the importance of the consolidation so that, you know, we, you know, we kind of keep all the plates spinning, so to speak, and that we don't let any drop. So it's a big change, and I'm glad, thank you for working with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, as well as Public Safety, to, you know, bring this together under kind of one memo, so we can move forward. So, good stuff. All right. Okay, we are moving on to approve the Facilities Director job description and update the classification plan, Kristi.
Yep. So as you're aware, we actually did an update to our classification plan earlier in the summer to reflect some, some different changes, but specifically the creation of the Facilities Director position. So that was a Buildings and Ground Supervisor was the previous title. We did change the classification for that position, and we called it at the time, a Facilities Director. Right around that same time, we got the staffing study that came out that recommended that this position be put under the DPW, the whole department reports to the DPW, and become Facilities and Fleet Manager. And so in working with Jim Stewart, who is our current Facilities Director, and also the DPW Director, we are proposing the changes to the job description to include the proposals from the staffing study with the new title. It wouldn't change the classification of the position. And then I've also issued a memo, which is also included in your packet, to the department heads, just letting them know that I'm delegating reporting of that department to the DPW Director at this time. I would say that in addition to that being as part of the staffing study, when we hired a new DPW Director a little over a year ago, we found through interviews that this is something that's very common in other communities, that this, that this department reports to the DPW Director.
Great, okay. So I will, if there are no questions for Kristi on the information presented here in our packet, I'll enter to motion.
Sure, I'll move. Do you want to do it, Alan?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I was just doing the facilitate. I'll move to approve the Facilities and Fleet Manager job description as presented, and further to update the classification plan by changing Facilities Director to Facilities and Fleet Manager.
I second. Edinburgh?
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll go around as presented here on the screen. Slekman Emery?
Yes, Emery, yes.
Slekman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Slekman Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
Slekman Hashmi?
Yes.
And Slekman Marshall, yes, 5005 being present. Great. Okay, Kristi, back to you, I believe.
Yep. So the other next proposal is for the Human Resources position. This is something that I had proposed as a recommendation of the staffing study that we implement in this current fiscal year. And it was something that, the way that we, I had proposed to implement it was to review a position that currently exists within the Treasure Collectors Department, and that was, had become vacant earlier this summer, and to identify the responsibilities that would be remaining in that position. So we had an administrative assistant, full-time administrative assistant, in the Treasure Collectors Office. That person was largely responsible for payroll and benefits work. And since that, that position has become vacant, we have pushed out a lot of the payroll to the larger departments. And so there's a lot of capacity that's been recognized in that position. And so what we would like to do is, instead of filling that position, we would like to create an additional position, or another, a different position, that would be the Human Resources. Actually, it says Generalist in your packet. I would actually say that we should amend that to Coordinator. So Human Resources Coordinator, which is what was proposed in the staffing study, they would take on the responsibilities of that previous administrative assistant position related to benefits, and also additional responsibilities that currently exist, both under the Assistant Town Manager and the Finance Director, as far as reporting and compliance, working with our insurance companies, and working with our personnel. So currently, I would propose that this position be an H4. It would be a non-union position, and we would be able to fund the position with the money remaining in the Treasure Collectors budget. So there would be no impact in the current year. Going forward, the salary schedule is higher than the current administrative assistant position. And so over time, you know, it would be, they would be moving along the salary schedule further than they would have if it had remained at an N10.
I'm sorry, Kristi, can you explain that again, what you just said about the, using existing funds, existing budget? I didn't-
So because the position has been vacant in the Treasure Collectors Office, we would use the remaining funds, which is about $43,000, to fund this position in the current fiscal year. The current, the N10 position, the administrative assistant position's annual salary is $42,000 to $59,000. That's the range. And that's the min to max range. It doesn't include the longevity increases that the union employees get. And looking at the proposed HR Coordinator position, and using the compensation classification scales that we have from the non-union compensation study that we did a few years ago, this position would actually go to an H4, which is a non-union classification with a salary schedule in the current year of $59,000 to $79,000. We would expect to hire someone at a low step. This is actually a really great addition to our positions when we think about the need for succession planning. Right now, we have a lot of positions that are entry level, and then we have a lot of sort of high-level department head positions. But we have very few sort of mid-level positions that someone might come in, and then move up to an assistant, and then a department head position.
Thank you. Thanks, Reverend. But that's what I thought I was hearing you say. I just want to bring all those pieces together. Okay. Are there any questions for Kristi?
Kristi, it's, hello?
Yes, go ahead, Sayed.
So I'm, a couple of questions. One, will this person report to Kim, or to you?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Well, I'm sorry, yes, they'll report to them.
Okay, that's my first question. And second, and maybe we discussed this earlier, you know, in this time of financial hardship across our town, I was wondering, I think I, maybe you answered this, but I'm just going to ask this again. Why can't we, like, like, reach out to, like, Northborough or Southborough to see if they would be interested in chipping in so that we could split the costs? And, you know, potentially, you know, because I recognize the cost, I mean, this cost, you may cover it, but next year, I do not know what the financial situation of our town will be like. And this is another, you know, another position we're going to be adding on our payroll, whereas if we could share it with Northborough, then we wouldn't, you know. So I just would like to know, why can't we do that?
So I would say that there are certain positions that are very well-suited for regional work. And we talked about some of them, maybe a potential public health. We have our ACO that we've started to make more regional. The Veterans District, which was established in 2013, is regional. When we talk about HR, it's all very specific to, or a lot of it is very specific to our employees and our employee data. This person would not necessarily be responsible for human resources, all human resources aspects in the school department, but they would be responsible for working through benefits with the school department, and also all of our retirees. So that's, it's an incredible number of people. So you're talking about a thousand people that this Human Resources Coordinator would have some aspect of responsibility for. So an HR position is not typically, I don't typically see it. I don't know, you know, Kim was different, yeah, she's shaking her head. So we don't typically see municipalities sharing this type of position. But we, we're not proposing to fill the administrative assistant position in the Treasure Collectors Office. And so there would be a savings there. So, you know, being very sensitive to the financial climate, definitely, but also moving forward and really making sure that the needs of the, of the town staff are met, and then also making sure that we're in compliance with all the HR laws.
Shelby, if I might?
Yes, Ian, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think we had talked about this before. And I think, besides the kind of personal data, whatever, I think we had also talked that, you know, towns have different benefits, different insurance providers, all different things. So trying to coordinate HR across multiple towns that have multiple benefits or whatever. Well, I applaud what Slekman Hashmi's saying, because it's something we've talked about where we can regionalize. I agree on this one. I don't believe this is one that, that really fits a regionalization thing. And I do think, Kristi, what I heard you say is, we basically are, in essence, we're thinking of what we'd say when we talk about adds to fleet, we're not adding to staff. We're basically repurposing an existing position. So that position, in essence, goes away. We're not going to fill that administrative assistant position. We're reclassifying and renaming it to an HR Coordinator. But in essence, we're not, while there may be an increase in salary, we're not adding a new body to town. This is really a restructuring of an existing position to a new position, still being filled by one individual.
Right. So the motion before you is to add this position, but, but not fill the existing position. But yes.
Right. I do think it's, I mean, I agree with all the points that have been made that this, again, we should always, I appreciate Slekman Hashmi bringing in the regional question to the forefront, to make sure, have we missed anything, and understand why. It's not appropriate, I totally agree with you, Kristi, and Ian, that this would not be a good fit for a regional position because of size, scope, type of data. But, you know, we could go on, but the points have already been made. Having said that, I do think it's important that while we're not, you know, we're, we're not adding headcount, we are ultimately going to add to the budget line. And I think it's important that we all understand that and acknowledge that in, you know, if we- important that we all understand that and acknowledge that in, you know, if we choose to support this motion. Having said that, I'm, I am fully supportive of this because of the type of expertise that we want and that we need in order to have a professional job. I think we saw through the staffing study that there are absolutely, I'll call them gaps or opportunities, pick a word, to, you know, fine-tune some aspects of our kind of HR service, you know, to our employees, to make sure that we've got good data, that we're managing benefits appropriately, that we're managing retirees appropriately, all of that. So, you go back to the study, there's no doubt that this person's going to hit the ground on day one and have, you know, about this much work to do. And I love the idea of bringing someone in a little more, you know, kind of on the lower end, if you will, of the scale and experience, to build that, you know, bench strength. So, I think that's a great strategy, and hopefully we find a qualified person. So, that's great. Yes, Alan?
I'm very supportive of this, in large part, you know, being a business owner and understanding that having dedicated professional resources focused on HR generally pays for itself. And so, yes, there's an increase to the salary line, but we'll have better data about benefits utilization that'll let us tailor future benefit plans to the needs of the staff and potentially save money. Avoiding compliance issues that could create liability is also a key thing. And so, you know, understanding that it's headcount neutral, but an increment in the budget, I'm cognizant of that, I'm always conscious of the total operating budget, but long-term, it's a sound investment, and I expect will, you know, save us money and avoid problems that cost money down the road. So, I'm supportive of this.
Well, we're all supportive. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the proposed HR Coordinator job description as presented slash amended, and further to update the classification plan by adding the position of HR Coordinator as presented and amended.
Emery, second.
And I apologize for what I just said. I said we're all supportive. I didn't mean to say that because that presumed, I knew you're supportive, so it was, there was general support for moving this forward, so thank you. I stand corrected. All right.
Sorry, HR Coordinator, and that's the H4 classification.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Is it HR Coordinator or HR Generalist?
Right, so I asked that if the amended to HR Coordinator, it would be H4 classification, 40 hours, one headcount.
Okay. So, okay, and me, you're good with that, second? Okay, thank you, sorry. Okay, roll call vote. Well, is there any further discussion? I'm sorry, now we have a motion. Okay, Selectman Emery?
Yes.
Selectman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Selectman Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
Selectman Hoshby?
Yes.
And Selectman Marshall, yes, 5005 being present. Okay, great, thank you. All right, next agenda item is Disclosure of Appearance of Conflict of Interest by a Conservation Commission member. Christie, do you want to take this?
Sure. So, the board received a disclosure form from a Conservation Commission member, Tim Buckeloo, related to his position on the Conservation Commission, understanding that there is an applicant that comes before the board that is doing work, consulting with his son on a project, and so he's filled out the disclosure form as he's required to do, and he's given it to his appointing authority, which is the board's selectmen, and so the board would just need to vote to acknowledge the disclosure.
Shelby, may I speak to this?
Ah, yes, please.
I want to clarify a couple of things here. First of all, it's our son Blake Buckeloo is putting an addition on the House. So, because of what the Building Commissioner and the Building Department requires, you have to have a site plan, that's a survey of the site and all the elevations of the site around the proposed building or addition. And Randy Waterman's group routinely does these for folks in town, and the Building Commissioner, you know, likes to get stuff from Randy Waterman because they know it's accurate and everything will be fine. So, that's what was going on. Blake hired and paid for himself, Randy Waterman, to make, to do the survey. The survey's done. He's been paid, Waterman's been paid, there's no ongoing work at all, and it wasn't really his son working with that agency, our son working with that agency, it was our son hiring the agency to do the required survey that the Building Department will need. So, just wanted you to know that Tim filed that, because in case anybody in the future said, gee, did you know that, you know, Tim's on this and his son was hiring Randy Waterman, that you would have had noticed that that was the case. But there isn't any ongoing work between anyone in our family and Randy Waterman's business. So, the way that it's written is fine, because he just wouldn't, he would abstain from any votes involving them, but they just wouldn't come up, that wouldn't happen.
I appreciate the clarification, because, one, I think it was the type of pen that was used, I could barely read it. Although, yeah, he has great handwriting, but I really, I said this to Christie, and I did not have a chance to actually call Tim earlier to ask about that, so thank you for the clarification, not just for me, but for everyone to understand what this is. So, that's very helpful and answers all my questions. Ian, you're off mute. Did you have a question?
Now, as I make a motion.
Okay.
I move, as the appointing authority, to accept the disclosure form and approve Timothy Buckeloo's participation on the Conservation Commission, with the condition that he abstained from any votes involving WDA while his son is working with that agency.
Edinburgh, second.
Okay. All right, moved in second. Any discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none. Roll call vote. Selectman Emery?
I think it might be best if I just abstained from this, so I won't vote on it.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's okay, all right. Selectman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Selectman Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
Selectman Hoshby?
Yes.
And Selectman Marshall, yes, that's 4001 with one abstention from Selectman Emery. Great. Okay, thank you for that. Moving to agenda item number 14, for those of you following along, we have a discretionary vote for the LIP certificate, which is the Mobile Initiative Program Compliance for Sale of 203 Corning Fairbanks Way, Unit 165. Alan, will you be taking this?
Sure. So, as you saw from the documents included in the packet, this is, as we've seen in the past, a local initiative program resale of an affordable housing unit. It has been reviewed and approved by the Chair of the Housing Partnership Committee, as well as gone through the process and is compliant and has been approved by the Department of Housing and Community Development. What this is effectively doing, and with respect to the sale of the property, is saying that the terms and conditions of the affordability rider are being met, and that the new owner consents and agrees and will accept an additional, or renewal, or extension of an affordability, affordable housing rider on the deed as the property transfers. One thing I want to point out is with most of these types of riders, the town has the right of first refusal. When this property in the future comes up for sale, there's a 90-day window. Well, DHCD looks for an eligible buyer. What's nice about this rider in particular, and it's pretty consistent with the way they're currently being written, is after that period, DHCD and the seller have the ability to sell it to an ineligible buyer. The town has a second point of time where we have a first right of refusal at that point. But the rider has written that whether the buyer is fully eligible or ineligible, the affordability clause stays in place, and the sale price stays at the affordability level. So that, if it goes from someone who's eligible to someone who's ineligible, the next time it goes up for sale, it's back looking for an eligible household to make that purchase. And so, it maintains the inclusion of this property in our subsidized housing inventory on a, or the SHI on a perpetual basis. So, it's good for the town, and it's good for our long-term plans with respect to affordable housing.
Alan, just for a clarification, you just said if it goes from someone who's eligible to ineligible, it would never happen that way, right? Because of...
Well, it could, it could. So, the way the rider is stated is, when this purchaser goes to sell the property, DHCD has 90 days to locate and secure, qualify, move forward with an eligible buyer. After that period, there's an additional period of time where an ineligible buyer can buy the property and have the deed restriction remain in place. That ineligible buyer is still what we would consider, it's still considered affordable housing, because for SHI, it would generally be 80% of the area median income is the qualifying income level for the family. That additional extended period for an ineligible buyer is still looking at 120% of area median income. So, it's effectively saying, if you can't do it affordable as traditional SHI, it can be affordable as workforce in that range of affordable housing, but the property remains included in our subsidized housing inventory, even though a household that might be slightly above the threshold has made the purchase. And when that owner goes to sell, we start back with the process with looking for an eligible household all over again, and go through the same process again.
Goes back to the visual in that slide you showed us about a week ago.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
This is an optimal arrangement for the town and its long-term affordable housing needs.
And I'll also point out that this has to be a primary residence, too, so some folks might ask, you know, could someone buy it and then rent it to someone else, and that is not allowed per, so.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, entertain any motion if we have one.
I move to approve the purchase of 203 Corning Fairbanks Way, Unit 165, and to authorize the town manager to execute all related documents.
Edinburgh, seconds.
Okay. And again, just to be clear, that sounds like an ominous motion. It sounds like we're purchasing something.
Yeah, it's funny, isn't it?
I just want to verify, Christie, that that is the correct motion. Yes, yeah, she's nodding, okay.
And I just wanted to make a comment. I looked up this address, I don't know if it's this actual unit. It's a very handsome apartment over there, what they built inside, they're gorgeous looking.
Okay, we have a motion by Selectman Emery and second by Edinburgh. If there's no discussion, we'll go to a vote. Selectman Hoshby?
Yes.
Selectman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Selectman Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
Selectman Emery?
Yes.
And Selectman Marshall, yes, 500. Okay. Okay, the next agenda item is the Liaison Program. So, I'll take this, and then Christie, you can kind of fill in here, please. So, we had discussed a couple different times, in a couple different ways, the, about bringing back the Liaison Program. So, as we know that we appoint several board members to several boards and committees, and Christie, through her travels and conversations, has talked with a number of those boards and committees, and there seems to be a real desire to bring back that program. Certainly, there are boards and committees that, where we have effectively liaisons, those are, I guess, for the purpose of this discussion, we should probably just name them for the public, where we've been actively attending, we don't have a definition for liaison, but I'll extend that to where we've been actively attending meetings, or we have a member of the board that's actually appointed to them. So, the capital expenditures, Country Club operating through Ian's work with the most recent kind of change in organization, economic development, just going down through the list here, Sustainable Westboro, the trustees of Soldier's Memorials, and I would say also, to an extent, Westboro Spirit Committee, Alan, you've played a role there, and I don't think I've missed anything in terms of our current involvement. So, when we look at the list of our Appointing Authority, we've got some covered, but certainly not the, you know, the majority. So, I think it makes sense to have a conversation here about appointing liaisons, or, you know, moving in that direction, to make some appointments from this board to those committees. Yes, Lee?
Christie, could you tell us which committees were sort of actively requesting this more involvement?
Yeah, great question, Lee, thanks.
So, I talked to, I actually talked to the members of the Bike Investor and Advisory Committee, and they liked the idea of having a liaison. I've talked to the, let's see, the Country Club Operating Committee obviously has a liaison, but, you know, I think that they have really benefited from that in terms of the work that they've done. You know, I think, I'm trying to remember, I just, I know that some department heads feel like there's value in having a liaison. You know, Jim Robbins remembers the Liaison Program, and so we talked about that. So, Shelby had brought this up, but it was something that I wanted to get back on the board's radar, because I think that we've sort of started, as Shelby has stated, sort of recreating our Liaison Program. When we have a big issue or we're working with a specific board, you typically designate someone to work with me, with them, which has been really successful. Some of them happened kind of organically. I think Alan's role in working with the Spirit Committee was just something that, you know, he had a relationship there, and it worked well, but it'd be great to have a Liaison Program. So, the new Active Transportation and Safety Committee doesn't have a selectmen representative on it, but would certainly benefit from having a selectmen point of contact. I also, I know that the selectmen bring up sometimes having boards and committees come in to give updates. That's not something that I would discourage, but I think having a liaison would really help with in terms of understanding when those updates would be most beneficial, what sorts of things should be brought before the board, that type of thing, so. So, I don't know if you want to, I mean, I don't know, Shelby, if you were thinking that we would appoint tonight, but we just wanted to get it back on.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping for some discussion around it. I think that we'd probably get up to the board and where the discussion goes, but if there are some obvious ones where there's a member here that says, jeez, I didn't realize, and I want to be part of that, and I think the other piece about this is, as a liaison, it doesn't mean necessarily that you have to attend every meeting. I do think we would probably want to put some parameters around it and expectations, which we may not be ready to do tonight, but before we sort of raise our hand to be in a liaison, we should understand what that commitment means. But it may be, it could be a number of different things, depending upon even the type of, you know, the committee that we're talking about. So, I'll just open it up for, we can open it up for some general conversation and discussion here. Yep, Alan?
And I think this is a good idea. You know, there are, I'm not sure if a committee has a board of select, you know, a select board member as a voting member, that you would need a second representative as a liaison to that committee.
Right.
And I think putting parameters around the expectation of liaison, I guess my thought would be that you don't have to attend all of the meetings, but you need to be aware of the activity, the issues, the priorities of that committee, and where they are in process of their, you know, of what they're working on, so that if something comes up, you can step in and provide guidance and assistance, and be able to help relay and show... be able to help relay and share information back to the Board of Selectmen on, on the work being done. Or if the Board of Selectmen has a question, sort of help be that conduit of communication and help facilitate that communication.
So the committees that are listed in your packet are all, just, just to be clear, are all committees that the Board of Selectmen appoints. And then I also included in there the planning board and the school committee. I know the school committee has a liaison, your board, and so I put that in there for discussion if you wanted to lead, have a liaison to each of those committees.
And, and I would suggest the Westboro Housing Authority. It might be good to have a liaison with them as well.
Well, if we're going to suggest groups, I think maybe the Council on Aging. We've had that before and it has been helpful in the past.
And they are, they are listed as one of our appointments, so absolutely. I guess I'll, is there anyone here that's sort of opposed to liaison program?
No.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, I think from a practical perspective, given that we're five, and there are, there are more committees, you know, from a practical perspective, we may need to prioritize any additional work that board members can take on. So I guess I would ask that we give it some thought and put this on a future agenda, probably post Fall Town Meeting.
That makes sense.
Gives us plenty of time to do our own research. And, and I guess I would also, Alan, you started us with some bullet points around kind of the, you know, parameters of what it would need to be a liaison. If, if we have some other thoughts around that, you could email those to Kristi or Kim. Who should they go to, Kristi?
Me. It's okay.
So that we can kind of have a, you know, just a couple of bullet points. Okay. And so we'll bring that, the, what would that be, the meeting on the 10th, November 10th? I think.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Alan, did you have something else?
Yeah, and just based on our vote tonight, we can update the list as BPAC and Public Safety are now one. But also I did have a question. Are there any, I, I know the Senior Disabled Taxation Relief Committee, did their request, that was an ad hoc committee, they did their presentation, we had the article on town meetings, is that committee still active or has it completed its mission and disbanded?
This was the current list that our office tracks, so we can look into that if that's not.
Was that, Sayad, that, that was a committee you were working on?
Sayad had to leave.
Oh.
He had an emergency, I believe.
He sent the email, he had an emergency, so.
Oh, okay. See that, I'm sorry.
The Taxation Relief Committee is the one that he helped. He championed getting created.
Yeah.
That John Steinberg led.
Yeah, right. Okay. All right, well, I, I think we should sort of, I, I think the other thing is, is that we should be, you know, I think judicious in like what we raise our hands for, given that, you know, it's November and we're quite a few months into this current fiscal year. So I'm all for establishing a program, but given, given terms and all that, we shouldn't, you know, kind of over commit and start something we can't finish. So that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Marshall, Chair, I would also say that we tongue in cheek here, but we should, I am fully supportive of this, but we should do it when we have back to two meetings a month versus four meetings a month.
Yeah, no, great, great point, Ian. Thank you. Yep.
I think, I think it's a great idea. I think the committees value it and it's, it's, I've enjoyed working with the Country Club Operating Committee. We did that prior to mine, so I think that's been one that, that's had some continuity. But I think it would be great for, you know, many of these other committees to at least have a resource there. I think that it's been helpful and would be helpful to them.
Okay. We'll talk about that two meetings a month thing under issues and correspondence. Okay, great. Okay, so work to be done there and we'll kind of tag that for November 10th. All right. Kristi, town manager report. And that was included in the updated packet that Seal sent out.
Um, so the first thing I wanted to mention is the COVID-19 case reporting. The Board of Health puts that, their report out every Friday, but the school department is also putting out numbers. And so we did have some activity on Facebook this weekend because the numbers don't line up exactly. And I just want to be really clear that the Board of Health numbers are looking at the entire population of Westboro. The school department numbers are looking at students and staff within their buildings. And so this, the, the school department numbers may include people who don't live in town. The Board of Health numbers may include school age population, individuals who don't attend Westboro schools. Say they go to Assabett or a private school or something like that. It related to EverSource, the, our latest information from Town Council, who's been working with their council, is that they're expected to file with the DPU at the end of October. Kim, do you want to present the ADA grant since you did all the work with Fred?
Okay, there we go. Sure. I'm pleased to let you know, last week, working with the building commissioner, who did the bulk of the work going through the, if you recall, about a year, a little over a year ago, the town completed its Americans with Disabilities Act self-evaluation. That was an assessment by a consultant of all of the town facilities, buildings, properties, walkways, parking lots, things like that, identified potential opportunities to address issues. The state annually has a grant cycle. Once towns have completed that self-evaluation, they're able to apply for grant funding to actually begin as a source to begin working on.
Kim, can you speak up just a little bit?
Sure.
For the viewing audience?
Sure. The town is able to apply for grants to begin addressing some of those issues. Fred went through the reports and identified repairs needed in the parking lot areas. It's, it's not the parking lot per se. It's actually, it includes some work in the parking lot and entry into the buildings at the senior center, as well as the downtown municipal parking lot and the parking lot and entry access area over at the golf course. So we submitted a grant request for about $120,000. We should hear before the end of the calendar year, if awarded. We have until January, I'm sorry, June, the end of June to complete the work.
Thank you. Can I, can I just ask a quick question on that? Two-part question. One, is it, is it a matching grant or just, it's a grant? Okay, thank you, Kim. And then, Kim, on the, I don't recall on the ADA self-evaluation tool, if the results of that and, you know, if you will, deficiencies or opportunities, I don't know what they, they call them, if they are sort of prioritized in that report or they were just listed and then we prioritize them? And if the latter, can you explain sort of how we prioritize what's identified?
Sure. The second step, once you've completed the self-evaluation, there is a, it's called preparing a transition plan. That work has not yet been completed. That's something that staff typically do and then identify. Any, anytime work is done in a building, you know, we ask that the plan be reviewed and we make updates. So that's actually in progress. That is one thing that the grant application asked where you stand with that, and we indicated it's in progress. But what we also do is you look at facilities, let's take the library for instance. We've talked about the potential for a library building project. So that affects you, probably wouldn't be prudent to seek grant funding to do work in the library. So that's sort of one level of helping you prioritize. To be honest, we picked some projects that we felt we could support quickly to submit the, the grant application and also projects that at this stage, we would actually be able to complete on the state's timeline, which is a pretty quick turnaround.
So perhaps that's something, I know, gosh, it feels like a while ago when Derek last presented that to us, right? That, was it not Derek?
No, Derek, so Derek did some ADA evaluation as part of the open space plan, but we hired a consultant that did the ADA evaluation and, and provided the reports to us. And so Fred is the ADA coordinator and working with Kim. I picked these projects, as Kim said, because we didn't want to miss the grant opportunity.
Yeah. For future, I think it would be probably helpful for a board to get an update of that planning process and kind of where we're at. Here's the list and, and, you know, just get an update on, on that work. So, thank you.
Under the Building Department Updates, 84 Turnpike Road, which is the old Mitsubishi dealership, is now becoming a Jeep dealership as a standalone point. Amazon Robotics has received approval to move their operations into the existing warehouse building and their first production lines have been installed. There's a planned market projected for the Target Lot on Route 9. And they've, they just dropped their ZVA application off, but this, if that goes well, then it'll proceed to the planning board for an A and R. Conservation Department, Conservation's been working with us on 30 Bellknap, 3133 Eli Whitney, and then also the 140 South Street. So they, they have all these parcels that they're going to be working on, talking about land management planning for. The conservation staff is also working on their, updating their inventory. It's, this involves extensive and inspiring database work by Assistant Conservation Officer Sherry Wittes, and will allow the department to confidentially and more accurately monitor, confidently, I think, and more accurately monitor and protect the land under its care. The Conservation Commission also continues to hold their public meetings via Zoom and has maintained a fairly steady permitting load. Under DPW, the DPW was awarded the Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Grant, that $12,500, which was the reason that we were able to take one of the articles off of the town meeting warrant. This will just get them started. Also, they conducted us, they were working on conducting a sit walk with the abutting residents along the east side of Lyman Street, based on conversations they had with abutters. The Finance Department's very exciting news, will be going out tomorrow, $15 million for the continuation of the failed school project, which the board will see at their, at your meeting on the 27th. That means that we had to go out for a new bond rating and we're proud to say that, that S and P reaffirmed the town's AAA rating and assigned the SP1 plus to the bands. So that's great news. The Fire Department's currently working on the ISO ratings, which is your insurance service office ratings. And so this is done every five years and they're optimistic that the rating will improve based on investments made by the community over the last five years. Also, in an effort to regionalize some of the Fire Department's special operations equipment, they've received delivery of a new dive boat that will, was obtained through FEMA. So it's property of the Fire District 14, but it's going to be housed at the Westboro Fire Department.
Kristi, before you leave the Fire Department, I just want to recognize that when Pat Purcell moved into the position as chief, in that first year of assessing what he needed to do as chief in this list of projects, this was one of them, to get the ISO rating up there. And I just want to commend Pat for the very proactive stances he takes and to move us ahead. I mean, we don't have to ask him or anything, he just knows what he's got to do. And he, and he's out there on the edge and he has wonderful support from his, you know, assistant or Jason and everybody else that works with him. I mean, it's just such a great team. So I just want to recognize his proactive stance and how fortunate we are to have him leading that department.
Also, the Public Safety Communication Center just obtained its annual certificate of compliance. And the Police Department, they've, the Police Department's participated in a few charitable events recently, which you may have seen on their Facebook page, including Special Olympics and the Jimmy Fund Walk. They are currently supporting the charitable group, the LE Fund for Breast Cancer this October. So you can visit the department's Facebook page for more information as they participate in the Pink Patch Project during October. And then the Town Clerk's Office is very busy with early voting. The Clerk's Office wanted to specifically thank Papaginos, who donated five pizzas to the town hall to help feed election workers who are working on, on the early voting work. As a reminder, there are three options for voting at the November 3 election. The flyer is on their website, but will also be attached to the report when it's posted. And if you vote by mail, just a reminder that you can track your ballot on the Secretary of State's website.
In-person voting starts on Saturday?
Yes.
At the town hall. I'm going to be down there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Kristi. Appreciate that. And we'll move into issues and correspondence of the selectmen. And we'll go first with our welcome back guests of the night, Lee Emery. Great to see you again.
Thank you so much. It's been a very difficult month. I was tested for COVID five times and came out negative five times. So I'm really in the clear. But I didn't, it took me all I could do to just get ready to read everything for tonight, so I don't have anything extra for issues and correspondence. I will get back in the groove on that at our next meeting. Thank you.
Of course. It's great to have you back here with us. Ian?
I mean, just to comment on Selectman Emery's thing with those negative COVID tests, she is eligible to play quarterback for the Patriots this coming weekend. No, the only thing I had is more of a, I guess, a, a question to put out there or something to seek, because I know there's been a lot of, at least chatter about it regarding Halloween and if the town has any specific policies. I know the governor has come out and not banned it like has happened in other states or, you know, whatever. So I think it's at the local level. I'm assuming the Board of Health may be acting on this, I'm not sure. But I think it's something that we, as we get closer to that date, there's probably going to be more questions coming from town residents. So maybe just something that we want to address and publicize from a public safety and public health perspective. So I don't know if that can be done there, Kristi?
Yeah. Well, actually, at your last meeting, I presented the flyer for Halloween. That was put, was put out by the Recreation Department and was reviewed by the public, Board of Health. And that, I'm trying to find it so I can pull it up, but that's actually, it's on the Facebook page, we'll continue to share it. But basically, the town doesn't ever schedule Halloween, so we're certainly not coming out to say what should and shouldn't happen, but certainly encouraging everyone, advising everyone to follow the CDC and the State Department's guidelines. And on that same flyer is a list of events that are, are not happening this year, but also a list of events that are happening that are in, in line with those recommendations. So we'll make sure to publicize that more.
Yeah, but you keep publicizing, because I know there's definitely been comments and questions, so, and I guess I wasn't paying attention, so apologies.
Actually, I think you had to, actually, I think you had to leave.
Oh, that's right.
Early.
Yes.
I did.
Yeah.
Maybe you were reading my mind last time, so.
Yeah, no, 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 you, you really, you had to leave early last time, so.
But besides that, I have nothing else for issues and correspondence, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alan?
Just one thing, it doesn't require a vote, but I would love to get concurrence or consensus. As we head to Special Fall Town Meeting, we have the warrant articles to create and provide initial funding to the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust. The town, there's actually an opportunity that could be a project for the trust to help preserve some affordable housing that there's a small chance of being lost. The timing, however, would mean that following the vote at town meeting, this board would have to move quite expeditiously to appoint the minimum five trustees. And then those trustees would need to get the declaration finalized and filed with the Registrar of Deeds in order to. with the Register of Deeds in order to fit within the window of time where the trust could get involved in helping preserve that affordable housing. And so if the board's comfortable, I know it's maybe not putting the cart before the horse, but at least next to the horse on the road. If we could start soliciting letters of interest for folks who might want to serve as trustees, with the understanding that any appointment would be contingent to the approvals at Special Fall Town Meeting?
I mean, I'll jump in here. I'm supportive of that, I mean, with the understanding that nothing is approved, so it could be work that's done, and, you know, folks say, I thought I was heading on the right path, and it didn't get approved. But as long as there are caveats to the process, I'm supportive of getting started. I mean, I think that there will be support in the community for this, so, yes.
And Alan, do you think it would be helpful, because so many people in the community don't really understand what that group would be doing, that it gives something in that sort of notification that goes out that we're soliciting interested citizens, about what kind of background would be useful to have on that committee, or what kind of interests, just so people get a feel for?
Yeah, we would definitely put something together to give
Okay.
the community an understanding of what the roles and responsibilities would be.
Great, thank you.
And all of the current documentation, even as far as the powers, roles, and responsibilities of the trust, you know, have been and are available on the Working Groups page on the town website, as well as on the Community Outreach site. So that's available as well. But we'll put something more specific together.
Alan, I'm supportive of that, with the caveats you put out there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, great.
And that's all I have.
Okay, super. I guess I'll take up airtime that the rest of you didn't use, so I appreciate that. So just want to, a couple kind of updates. I want to thank the We Care Group, which is a new group that's formed, they're the Westboro Committee for Anti-Racism in Education. They hosted a book swap on the, at the library on Monday, and where there were books where folks could come and pick out for free a variety of books that were really about anti-racism, they're about children's books, about children of color, disability, a variety of topics. And it was nice to see folks stopping by to participate in that. So appreciate the work being done there. I also to want to build off of Ian, your comment, there is, the Recreation Department is doing some great things to kind of keep that Halloween kind of spirit going in the face of the pandemic. So there is a virtual 5K that folks can participate in. You can go to the Recreation Department's Facebook page, or to their website, and find out how to participate in that. There's swag and some, you know, medals you can sign up for. It's actually very, very cute, and there's actually even a Facebook support group of how to do a 5K. So that's great. And then the scarecrows that are around town. It's been great to see the Recreation Department kind of lead that effort, and really engage the community. And so it's been fun to see pictures online, and just as you're driving around, like, oh, there's a scarecrow. So encourage folks to get out in their car, on foot, and go, and there's a voting process. So to learn more about that, you can go to the Recreation Department, again, Facebook or webpage. On a kind of the more serious note, if you will, I want to just remind folks that the Westboro Power Choice Community Aggregation Program, the new contract comes into play beginning in November. So there's lots of information that's easy to understand out on our town website. You go to the town's website, right on the front page, there's a big icon that says Westboro Power Choice. You can also go to masspowerchoice.com/westboro. And just to remind folks that this is a town-vetted alternative to National Grid's basic service, and offers potential savings and greener options. So there's a video right there on the page, once you open it, and you can actually calculate what your energy cost would be. So check that out. Call if you have questions, there's phone numbers on the page. And then finally, I want to give folks a heads up that the Rotary Club is working with the Town Clerk to offer its roll-to-the-pole assistance again. So on Voting Day, we will be volunteers from the club, and the community is welcome to participate, holding the door open, helping folks if they have some mobility issues, to get down to the polls, and just general directing people to their precincts. You know, we're a small town, but yeah, we have five precincts, so that's half the battle when you're going to vote, right? So encouraging folks to get out and vote early. But if you are going to vote on that day, there will be some assistance there. And if folks are interested in volunteering, I'll point you to the Rotary Club page, or you can contact me for information. So anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you to Karen Henderson, Westboro TV.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, actually, Jeff is on tonight, just Karen's name there on the screen, but Jeff is behind the scenes. Thank you, as always, to Westboro TV for bringing us live and taped to the community. So we'll be meeting again next Tuesday, next Tuesday at 5:00. Oh, Issues and Correspondence, I promised to bring up our meeting. We should think about getting on a, back to our twice-a-meeting schedule. So Ian, thank you for bringing that up, and let's sort of agree that that will happen effective November.
Good.
Promise. No, I'm just kidding. I promise.
Madam, I move that we adjourn our meeting this evening.
I second it.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Roll call vote. Selectman Emery?
Emery, yes.
Selectman Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Selectman Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
And Selectman Marshall, yes, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, for watching and participating.